Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. We are back. We're gonna skip all the ones because they're talking to each other. Uh, matter Z seventeen dash six one, Allison McCollum, special permit floodplain variance to reconstruct, a single-family home on premises number one forty-nine Rockland Street.
They're just, they're outside talking. We just said we're gonna skip it.
One forty-nine Rockland. Now, I understand that there was a new, uh, plan. There's a new plans that we didn't see? Is that true?
That is true.
So stop right there.
There was, uh, again, Jim Burke, Sel Burke and Associates, officers over in Quincy. I'm, uh, here representing Allison McCollum. We recently bought a property, one forty-nine Rockland Street. It's five thousand square foot lot, uh, fifty by a hundred. And go ahead.
If you don't have, if we don't have the plans two weeks in advance, we don't hear the case until we, until we see them first.
Understood. And the reason, can I just tell you the reason we changed them? The reason we changed them because we heard through the pipeline that the neighbors didn't appreciate the height. And what we were doing was going four stories and thirty-six feet. Uh, what we're proposing now in new architectural plans is, uh, two and a half stories over pedestal and, uh, no more than thirty-five feet.
So if you could get that to us, come back in two weeks, you'll have a chance to see them.
Okay.
And we could take a decision based on that. Because I really, I really...
Understood. Yep.
You know, we need to see some, some things first.
Sure.
Understood. You wanna say something?
Just before you continue, I, if I could.
Yes.
Thank you. So, um, who's here for one forty-nine Rockland Street? Can I show your hands? Okay, great. Um, so one, I wanna just give credit to Mr. Burke in advance of his filing. He did reach out to me requesting this piece of frequent flyer, seeing with each other a few cases this evening, a neighborhood meeting, a tear down for a single-family, single-family. I usually like to see to the board. When the plans came to me, I had a conversation with Mr. Duca, very concerned about the density, very concerned about the height. We're not gonna be supporting height variance. Right back to Mr. Burke. So there has been a lot of back and forth. He's been very willingness to have conversations with the applicant as well as her project team. So I myself haven't seen the new drawings. I appreciate the continuance, but be it that you're out here on a summer night, I think part of what I heard on the votes to the opposition was the height variance. I believe everything else is maintaining the footprint except it's shifting because of FEMA regulations. It's shifting forward on the lot. So I just wanted, I, I get it. Let's do a fuckhouse meeting when the plans are before everybody. But I just wanted for the neighbors to kinda get the understanding as to what's changed and why it's changed. So, thank you.
Thank you. So yes, folks, I'm sorry you have to come back, but come back and look at the plans that are actually the real plans and not the ones that you...
So we're ready.
Yes. So can I say something?
No.
They eat all this stuff up.
Okay.
Sorry, you don't mind.
Yeah, so I just wanna say that the applicant, Annette Atulardship, two thirty-five Rota Street, signed immediately a letter to the property. So the applicant bought the property last fall. Um, I have not heard from her once since then to discuss any of these plans. There was a conservation commission meeting that was six weeks ago where the neighbors, along with myself, signed a letter, submitted that, five direct neighbors around there. We voiced our opposition. In addition to height, we have an opposition to the side setback, the front setback. She is violating variances everywhere. So why wasn't this addressed six weeks ago when she saw that letter?
I don't think...
We're gonna wait till we see the new plan.
That's all, so...
We're not gonna hear the case tonight. We're just gonna, we're gonna sit...
We have an order of conditions.
You guys can talk later.
Sure.
Maybe that'll help. Okay, as soon as we do this.
We can't, we can't make a judgment on something we haven't seen, so we gotta look at it ourselves.
So we're gonna make a motion to continue to, uh, settle the law.
Go on, I would agree.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, regarding case number Z seventeen dash sixty-one, Allison McCollum for a special permit floodplain variance to reconstruct, a single-family home on premises number one forty-nine Rockland Street, planning, I make a motion to withdraw, to continue the airing until July eleventh.
Second?
Second, yep.
Come up and see it in all favor?
Aye.
Guys, have a seat. We'll see you all back on the eleventh.
All right. Mr. McCollum, is he ready?
Sorry about that.
No worries.
Wait.
Counselor Hodge.
Counselor Hodge. Are you ready to watch what's, what's matter? We, we had asked, we had actually met with the council and asked what they would need. The council brought this question to me, and, and, but we do have people here who object to it. We're gonna ask for continues because they deserve what they would need. They deserve a full explanation on what the property lines are. They deserve a full explanation of the plans. And I apologize to this board. We just assumed that it was what they would need was all set. But they have, they have valid concerns that have to be addressed prior to us going forward. It wouldn't be fair to them. It's not fair to the applicant either. It's not fair to anybody in the community, nothing, nothing we don't want here. So we're gonna ask for continues so we can have that need and they would need.
You wanna schedule with the council? You gotta go with the council with them?
I, you know, they're here now. I'm actually gonna schedule with them, see what they didn't want, not that wanna meet, and I'm gonna let the council know. It's, it's kinda important they, yeah, have any questions, you can answer, you or the board.
You know, you want me to give you like a month and then you come back?
Yeah, a month, a month.
Two weeks or what?
Month, month.
You got some neighbors here that are saying...
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying. These are the neighbors that object to it. And one of the, they have no idea what the plans are. It's not fair to them. So, so, and, and I know they have valid, valid concerns, serious concerns.
We can see the plans.
We see the signs. That's why we object.
Okay. All right, so, uh, okay, with the twenty-fifth?
Yeah.
Oh, the twenty-fifth?
Yep. Seven, seven, that'd be fine. That'd be fine.
Yeah, always Tuesday. No, that's not. August eighth.
August eighth?
Would have only early... July eight, yeah.
July eleven?
Eleven, July eleven, seven. Yes. That'd be fine. What? Oh, we will.
You go for the eleventh?
The eleventh, twentieth street, sixty.
Ready?
Ready.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, regarding case Z seventeen dash sixty, Wellbe Builders LLC for variance to construct two new buildings, each containing three ton of houses. We're total of four units on the premises number twenty-five, Gethsemane Quincy. I make a motion to continue the case to July eleventh.
Right. Second, another motion, see in favor?
Aye. Okay. Thank you.
For the edge, Paul Stewart.
July eleven was gonna be a really quick night.
No.
It was. They were part of you.
Matter Z seventeen dash six-two, Leo Martin, special permit floodplain variance to construct a two-car, a new two-car garage, attached to...
Let's say tow, so don't...
Yeah, I know, new two-car garage, two-car, two-car attached garage on the premises number one twenty-one, one twenty-five, Charles Street, Quincy. See how people are represented here?
Yes, he is. Good evening. Again, Jim Burke with Sel Burke and Associates, with offices in Quincy. I'm here tonight representing Leo Martin for a parcel at one twenty-one, one twenty-five Carroll Street. Um, it's an existing nine thousand square foot lot. Uh, and what we're proposing is basically a twenty-four by twenty-eight, uh, garage. It's in the, uh, the floodplain. Uh, we are gonna floodproof the building by providing, uh, flow-through panels. Uh, we have gone through conservation. We've got an order of conditions to, to construct that. It's also nine feet, nine point one feet to the side lock, really due to the fact that the existing house location kind of, uh, kind of pushes it, that if it was structured twenty-three, why, uh, towards that setback. Uh, the existing homes in the area are actually used. The one right next to us is actually a little bit older than the property line. But, uh, there's zero setback on that between, uh, with the number of other homes in the area, uh, less than, uh, the required setback in the area. Do you have any questions? If you'd like to answer them.
I don't have any questions at this time.
Nope.
Any questions?
I have none.
I have no questions.
I have none.
Okay, um, I have a question, actually. Uh, it seems to me that as we're saying that this is a garage, is this a little bit more than just a garage?
It is. I have the architectural too.
It looks like it's a brick old house addition, I'd say. Your, your...
This is the architectural that, that shows a garage space attached to, uh, it's, it's kind of a bungalow style home. Uh, it's, it's living space in the first floor. Uh, there is just, you know, that area. Leo, are we putting it up?
There's a, there's a third bedroom going over part of the garage in balance of what would be mechanical rooms because there is no basement.
Mechanics have to go out of the floodplain anyways.
Right. Okay, now I'll take questions again. Archie, you want to just tell us a little more about what you're doing here? With showing us the...
Yeah, so... Right, I have the first floor plan. And, and you're showing the living room and kitchen here. Unfortunately, I don't have the, uh... I don't have a second floor plan, but I do have the elevations. Uh, so you have the bedrooms. We located it up in this location. This is the existing home here. So that's a bungalow style with the addition shooting off the top of that gable edge.
See, the initial construction, it doubles, doubles the size of the structure.
Excuse me?
Makes it look like it doubles the size of the structure.
I would say that's probably pretty accurate, yes.
Someone raised off the high line, right? Same high line?
Same height, yes.
All right, I have another question now. If you guys don't, we can move on. Think one speak in favor of this.
I'm Ashley Felico, I'm at fifty-five Macy Street.
Beautiful.
Yes, you have.
Job free.
I'm Ashley Felico, I'm at fifty-five Macy Street. Um, I just wanna start off by saying the house's current condition is terrible. It's, the woman that lived there before was well, didn't keep up with it. Uh, and the owners that are buying it now, they've actually bought another property on Charles Street, completely renovated, made it beautiful. And I think anything they're gonna do to it is only going to help all of us, make the property value look nice, make the neighborhood look nice, and I am completely for the addition.
Anyone else favor? Fine, uh, what do you?
Mr. Chairman, members of the zoning board of the hills, Russell Kellpers. I live at one sixteen Rota Street in Quincy. And I have an, an unattached garage behind my home. But I think anytime that you gentlemen and you ladies have an opportunity to approve an attached garage to a home, it improves the value, I think, in, of all the property and house neck and Rock Island, Corvair. So I would highly recommend that the board consider favorably this application.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else wanna speak in favor? Once, twice, three times, I call that party here and over. A letter from DPW, and they have no comment. Thank you. Anyone who wants, who's opposed or undecided? Opposed, undecided. Once, twice, three times, I call that close.
Thank you. Good evening. Margaret LaFarge, I seem to have your whole agenda this evening. I know I've had some opposition, but I am here to support this application. And Ashley, for a rookie man, you did terrific. So one, let's talk about existing conditions of the home, right? It's been vacant for a long time. The other woman that's had it, um, it's become a blight of the neighborhood. Two, classic house neck move, you know, did grow up in the neck, but she's... You're in now. She bought a house on one side of the street, moved diagonal three doors down, right? Clearly, she's taking a property in the neighborhood that was, made it approved, staying in the same neighborhood. Um, and part of the issues that we run into, which is the neck, is a lot of it's pre-existing, non-conforming. And so either we're all gonna go move to Hannover, we have the land to live the house you have, or we come before you for variances to give us the house that we need to keep the people in our neighborhood. And so with that, I ask that you find favorably upon this application. I know the applicant. I know that they will do a great job with this property, um, and it will take one of the worst houses on the street and make one of the best. It's great for the neighborhood. And obviously, the chemicals and things bringing out the floodplain, the bone through conservation for this project as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Charles.
And there should be a woman on the drawing board. I just gotta say, you know, when ladies want to be voting, a voting member, right? It's like...
Absolutely.
You can have Ossie, too.
The, the vice chair's spot is open, so...
No thanks. For a frequent flyer, no.
Could be, could be open.
When a woman mayor appoints one.
Uh, comments, Mr. Board members?
I'm good. Sorry.
We're all set?
All right. Mr. Chairman, regarding case Z seventeen dash sixty-two, Leo Martin for a special permit floodplain variance to construct a new tower, attached garage on the premises number one twenty-one, one twenty-five, Charles Street.
Two.
Set towers.
Uh, we don't, we don't, we don't talk like that.
I'd like to make...
I'm sorry.
I'd like to make a motion to grant...
Throw down, Renell.
Grant the requested permit floodplain variance.
Second?
Yeah.
Second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close?
Guys, have it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Back a few of your time. Z seventeen dash six-three, Jeff Hunt in Cameron Evans for a variance to construct a second floor addition on premises number two sixteen South Central Avenue in Wallaston Heights section of Quincy. He just changed the name this week to Wallaston Heights. I was supposed to say Wallaston Tilt, but what do I know, maybe thirty years, forty years.
I'm Jeffrey Hunt. My wife, Catherine, unfortunately, her baby's had it canceled on his last minute, so it's just me today. We're just looking to put a second story on our house, actually more like a one point five story on the house. You know, we have a little five-year-old, I mean, five-month-old. Family's growing. Born and raised in the Wallaston Hill area. Grew up on Belmont Street, lucky enough to buy a house, you know, one block over. I always laugh that a seventeen-year-old self would be kinda mad if he stayed in towny, but, you know, it's a great neighborhood. We love it. I wanna stay there, but the grown family, and the, our little three hundred fifty square foot bungalow, can't quite handle it.
You know, Jeff, the only problem I have, if I could, is that you, the ordinance is two and a half stories, and we're looking at three. And that just scares me a little bit because the... I wish your architecture was... I wish, I wish, I wish you was... So just for me to see this again, I mean, how high is this?
I don't have the plan. I'm sorry. If I did, I could be one of the...
Thirty-one.
Sorry, one?
Yeah, thirty-one ten.
And the four with three stories because of the...
How did you, you wanna, what kind of, stop trying to, did you drop off on the back or something? No, I dropped off a little bit. But I think, you know, my progress, the link department, they didn't say my basement might be considered a little bit too big in the back.
Yeah.
It's about a pony door in the back, so probably about that high is my door, right? Jay, would you know why we published three stories?
It doesn't look, it doesn't look like three.
No, really, it does.
No.
This would be...
Thirty-four in the back.
Yeah, problem, it's, it's, it goes by the average grade plane.
Yeah.
And I believe the average grade plane is more than four feet, which would make the face of the face store technically.
But just because you drop down on, you're on the right, if you're on the golf course side, it's the golf course side, yeah.
Yeah, just so people sees that's the golf course.
Yeah, 'cause you'd fall down on the, you know, you drop off that, you drop off five feet off, both the eyes.
Any other questions in the board?
What's on your, uh, do you have anything besides storage on your third floor as of right now?
No.
No?
No, it was just gonna be a crawl, like crawl space attic. We're gonna have stairs up to it.
Okay.
I'll, I'll just point out that in the board, our prior ordinance, you used to measure the height of the building from the front of the building only and the center of the building, if you were less than four feet in. But now they measure the average grade plane, so if you've got a trough, it, it, it doesn't...
Topography.
Basis for a variance?
It's a basis.
Why do we have these guys?
I'll keep mine off.
Uh, okay, have a seat.
Thank you.
All right, there was a lot of questions, right?
I have none.
Uh, I have some correspondence. I have it from the Honorable Ian King, dear vice-chair today. Ian, I write as a part of the application for a variance to construct a second floor addition on premises number two sixteen South Central Avenue. Mr. Hunt and Mrs. Devine, events?
Events.
Evidence?
Evidence.
Thank you. Was kind to review and provide me with a copy of their plans for their home. They've been, uh, continuing improvements, uh, the building's grown. They need to expand their home's footprint, which they're really not doing, Ian. They're just going up. I should note that this house has three, this three houses away from my parents' home on South Central. I've known, uh, Mr. Hunt's attended Wallace High School, uh, Wallaston School together, high school. He is a, he's a native of Wallaston Hill, Beckton, Wallaston Hill, resident. It was been closed up, 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 like, he's in favor. DPW has no comment. They want opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided? Once, twice, three times, call that party here and close.
I'm in favor. Who would leave it at thirty-four feet in the back?
Uh, yeah, so...
Okay.
It's a problem.
All right, I'm in favor.
In favor?
In favor. Yeah, I think it's just, it's just the nature of the slow pack. The angle you're sitting down with first of all, friends, bro, no.
No, so... But I have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, regarding case number Z six seventeen dash sixty-three, Jeff Hunt and Catherine Evans for, uh, variance to construct a second floor addition on premises number two sixteen South Central Avenue. Quincy, I would like to make a motion to grant the requested variance.
Second? On the motion, see in favor?
Aye.
Guys, have it.
Good luck.
Good luck.
More with the five-month-old.
Z seventeen dash six-four, Quanley for a variance to construct a one point two story addition to the existing single-family home on premises number forty-eight Newton Avenue. Chris Stevens. Not tip or his representative here.
Representative, Attorney, Attorney Bernard Kenny for, um, petitioner on this.
Jim Chen, the architect, tell me, uh, can you make up here to the...
Uh, we presented before you, you passed, uh, several times, and are here and this evening, um, the new plan to, um, renovate, to, uh, addition, to make it, um, to put a second floor and continue it as a one family. Um, the, um, front, um, the, the front and left, um, setback are, um, we need the variance for, but we are staying in the same footprint. Um, and we are staying within the, um, the height, the height is twenty-six point, um...
How high is it? Is it twenty-nine, ten, thirty-four?
Well below thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
What, what's the height?
Twenty-nine feet percentage.
Oh, yeah, it's twenty-six.
Can I, before we go any further, can I, do we have the right plan? Do I have two front doors on my plans? I'm, me and Mr. Ham will both have two front doors.
I got two front doors, too.
I think we might have, like, old plans.
We, are we having a plan?
No, that's not, that's not an old plan. That's a new plan with two front doors.
We have two single fronts.
Yeah, it says, "Single-family additional," but it's two front doors.
I don't know if it's, there's a, there's a door beside it on there.
Can you show us ours, please? I'm in New York. I'm sorry. I just wanna, okay.
Okay.
They might wanna see it as well. So I just, sorry to stop you. Before we were going any further, I just wanted to...
I think I saw that as a sort of double door. I didn't see it as two.
Yeah, it comes off as two here.
And I think the other thing that sort of scares us is that one of the plans, a couple of people, one of the pages of the plan, it says, we're looking for...
Dean wants this two-family conversion operating.
Yeah, that's something I have about to, uh, think from my head. Okay. I mean, is this really substantially different than what you already brought? I mean, I know you have had your presentation, but it seems like it's kind of almost the same thing, except now we're calling it a one family, a two-family.
Well, I know for the owner, um, the biggest opposition was the, the, um, the neighbors' objection to, um, two separate families and what that involves with, um, number of residents and parking and et cetera. Um, so as a way to improve this property, the owner would like to put an addition on it and add bedrooms and bathrooms.
Okay.
So I can say, yes, it's different. It's not a, it's not a two-family.
So it doesn't have those, um, things that make it a two-family, you could separate eat, residences, and two kitchens, and two...
Right. No, no, as you can see on the plans.
Continue on, sorry.
Um, the, so it would be, um, a relief from three point four point three, um, and we would argue that it is not a, um, a more detrimental, um, substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming structure, as I said, that it stays within the footprint.
Any questions?
Let's see, uh... Should we go from two beds to four?
Correct.
And the basement's already currently finished, correct?
Correct.
So it's gonna have three playrooms, right?
Um, the upstairs area...
Family room, cellar, plan, family room in the cellar, two family rooms in the cellar, and another family room on the second floor.
If you look at that family room on the second floor, it's more of a foyer area, um, with, you know, between the bedrooms. It's not a, it's not a separate room. I think we're imagining toys were happening up there, but it's not a separate room.
All right, leave your, kind of seat. Any correspondence? I do.
Two of both, no comment.
You want any letters?
No, I have my own collection of letters that I'm gonna be reading into the record, but go ahead.
Oh, thank you. DPW has no comment. Uh, I have a, oh, a... I have a, I have a letter from Karen Patrick E. February twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen. If the mayor requests a continues, it's what denied your request to variance and change views of two families. You're looking at the recent submitted incomplete drawings on letter-sized paper appears as a layup. They use, compared to the original drawings, submit having scaled down, but there are two separate side-by-side front entrances for this address for a single-family house. It looks more like a future request for additional variance to two families with just one small petition wall, believe we are not. This is beyond acceptable. It's wasted resource. Everyone along, the logic is baffling and deceitful. We respectfully request this matter to be denied. And then, I have a copy on this, letters they were sent on the twenty-second of February and October, uh, of two thousand six, July forty-sixth, two thousand sixteen, I read. So I'm gonna read that, because I have two other cases. Uh, Paul Daggett says, "Dear Chairman Atkins, after reviewing the proposed plans of four days in the past, we would like to say that we are against the construction of a proposed one. They have still the addition." Reviewing the plan, reviewing the plans with the proposed addition, we have some concerns. The plans look very similar to the plans that were submitted for the, for the two-family home, the proposed four bedroom hall, three family rooms. The proposed four-bedroom hall has three family rooms, possibly living room, this falls across. There's also unfinished attic space above our floor. These are the vacant areas of having space to view. Also shows a two-separate front door side-by-side. It's just wondered if this opposed addition is only a first step to get the addition approved, addition approved, we're trying to change to a two-family, may I pay your attention? Thank you." Um, anyone opposed or undecided? Oh, sorry, I don't know. Uh, anyone like to give a favor? First, twice, third, fourth, let's want to hear it over. Anyone wants to speak with a pose or undecided? Please tell us your name and address for order.
Good evening, Chairman Kovay.
Yes.
And I'm Ms. Quincy, I'm the board of appeals, my name is Joy Luster, and I reside at forty-four Newton Avenue in Quincy. I'm here tonight to voice my continued opposition to the applicant's request to fill now a one-and-a-half-story addition to the existing single-family home at forty-eight Newton Avenue for the reasons that I will set forth here tonight. To refresh everyone's recollection, tonight is the seventh hearing being held in an eighteen-month period for this applicant at this particular location. That is the equivalent of one meeting every ten weeks. In the face of strong, made-of-opposition, applications have been repeatedly withdrawn and re-submitted, but barely any changes, if any at all. The last meeting concerning this applicant and this address was on February twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen, at which you board members voted unanimously against the applicant's request for variance and finding. The neighborhood agreed the sigh of relief, we felt that you had made the right decision for the community. And we thought that the issue was put to rest for two years, that the applicant could not come before the zoning board for a period of two years concerning this project. Well, apparently that is not the case here, as we deliberate once again whether to grant relief to this applicant for essentially the same project. In my review of the plans submitted, the projects are identical in every aspect but the name minus the second set of kitchen appliances. They are now calling it a single-family addition, everything else is the same. I have to ask myself, why build it for the same specifications as a multi-family as for a single-family? And the answer is obvious, to me anyways. They're essentially taking their plans for the two-family building and now calling it a single-family. They're attempting to get their variance and finding through as a single-family and then come back at a later time and date to request a finding for a change of use to a multi-family. And this is unacceptable. What arrogance is this on their part? Do they think we are all stupid, that we're not paying attention? Do they think that you, do they think that of you as well? Did I mention that the plans show two separate and distinct doors? I wonder what it will take for this applicant to accept your decision made on February twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen. When will they come to realize that forty-eight Newton Avenue is a bungalow-style home on a thirty-narrow lot, which is only thirty-eight feet wide and is meant to be a starter home on a small lot? And just as an aside, a piece of administrative, um, the, um, dimensional application that they submitted with their form shows a forty-one-and-a-half-foot, uh, width of the lot and the actual assessment plot shows thirty-eight feet, so that's almost a ten percent decrease against their dimensions. And we'll affect other calculations on that.
Just to clarify, this assessment's plan can't be used from legal.
Yeah.
It's just a legal.
Okay.
All right.
All right, I stand corrected.
No, it's just, it's just a point.
Okay, thank you. Continuing, um, furthermore, the applicant did not submit any landscaping plans as they had done previously, and yet they are seeking a permit for, for cars. Again, I ask, why so many spaces for a single-family home? Will they building, will they be building a parking lot in the back as previously proposed? Will they be planning to cut down a magnificent red maple tree whose age is estimated to be a hundred and thirty-five years old? All of these questions reinforce my suspicion that the applicant is seeking to get the approval for variances and findings under the guise of a single-family application. And once approved and built, to then later apply for a multi-family permit. Make no mistake, members of zoning board, this application is a wolf in sheep's clothing. Take a stand in supporting previous decision to oppose this project at forty-eight Newton Avenue. No more withdrawals without prejudice, enough already with the repeated and frivolous application attempts. Vote no on this project. We respectfully request that the variance and findings be denied. Sincerely, James Boyd and Joy Luster, it was my husband and I. I have several other letters here from, uh, my neighbors, the Moyes, and I'll leave that very quickly. Dear members of the zoning board of appeals, my family have lived at fifty Newton Avenue for twenty years. We are commonly raising our two sons in our safe and peaceful neighborhood. We vehemently oppose the granting of variance to forty-eight Newton Avenue to add one-and-a-half stories to the existing structure. What is striking is that the proposed plans are virtually the same as the plans submitted by the owners when they were requesting a variance to build a two-family house. After seven hearings over a span of many months, the board denied the variance for other reasons. And now the owners are coming before the board with essentially the same plans, but for single-family homes. Nothing has changed, the plot of land is still narrow, yet they continue to propose an almost identical plan. The plan shows two doors in front of the house. What single-family house has two front doors? She asked. Given the proposed plan, which includes four bathrooms, three family rooms, and two front doors, a reasonable, a reasonable person would assume that they are planning to convert this home into a two-family home, which was their original intention, despite the fact that they were denied a variance to do so. They're not necessarily opposed of also the existing house, but the proposed plans are unacceptable as they are clearly intended for a two-family dwelling. Again, we respectfully request the variance be denied. This is from Mr. Penn, Penn and Lisa Moye at fifty Newton Avenue. And you already have...
We already have that one.
You have Karen, E, and Patrick E's letter. And you have the Daggett's letter as well, also in opposition. And I have Mrs. Collier's letter, she's a direct letter to the property.
Can you just read any new information off of it?
Pardon?
Can you just tell us any new information off of it?
Uh, new information off the top of it. Uh, I don't know, because I don't know, I didn't read her letter.
Okay.
So, in respect and deference to her, um, uh, it's addressed to the, the board regarding forty-eight Newton Avenue, petition to add one-and-a-half stories to a one-family bungalow home. I'm writing to, again, to the zoning board and to our councilor, Chris Hughes, to listen to our concerns regarding a single-family home at forty-eight Newton Avenue. A short while ago, the owner was denied to make it a two-family, or even trying for us to be larger, three stories high. The specs on file show, now show, asking one-and-a-half-story addition and an attic space on top. She wants two front doors and four parking spaces, two extra bedrooms and possibly extra bathroom. This lot is too small for floorcutters. The street is filled. Driveway only big enough for two cars. Also, why does the plan show she wants two front doors and a third level of space for attic space? The basement already is finished with storage space. This sounds like she wants, at a later date maybe, to try and turn it into a two-family, maybe adding a kitchen in the attic space. I don't think she is telling the truth to us. Fix and rent it as a one-family and let us try to be good neighbors in this fine community. This is how Mrs. Collier. I came to submit these and, you know, just speak to, um, obviously, you said, I could not comment on the fact that it was a thirty-eight, what, um, uh... Width. But, you know, the applicants purchased this property, and I have to, I have to believe that with all of the resources, with having their, uh, representatives at six previous meetings, that they certainly knew what they were getting into when they bought the property, and that they knew there were variances. The fact that it has an existing variance and that there are other houses on the street that have two-and-a-half stories is not necessarily the argument we could go with. We go with what makes the most sense in the neighborhood. And that street has twenty homes, or twenty buildings, three of them are brick apartment buildings, and three of them are multi-family homes. And the, and, and the other, um, I think it's the other fourteen or so, yeah, would be, um, single-family homes. And, um, they all have at least sixty feet of width on that property. So, the argument to say, well, the others are all two-and-a-half stories and they're closer to what the zoning ordinance is required, seven-five. And I just think that this two-and-a-half-story thing is way too big for that lot. And it takes, it's an affordable home for a young professional couple to be able to buy, you know, start a home in Quincy. And it's making this big mansion on a postage stamp of a lot. And I think that's too big. And we already have spoken to the, we all think your intentions are. But again, I, I seriously hope that you guys will consider, um, that, um, that this is not an undue hardship on their end. They'll still make their money if they fix it up. They just don't have to make it that big. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other thoughts? Mr. Duke. Thank you, board members. Just for clarification, this is a finding, this is what they're required. Secondly, this is a single-family home, it can only be used, the way it's laid out on the plan, it can only be used as a single-family home. Doesn't have walkout basement or anything that would support a two-family. Obviously, the two doors are a typo. But I just wanted to make that clarification, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I ask the board, they think about this. I think this is also a pretty big house for this area, for this structure. I might entertain, I might, as one board member, I might entertain another plan that actually brings this thing down with two floors, two-story building. And I'm not sure exactly what that makes, takes, but it seems like we have a lot of family rooms. It is high, we could get this thing down maybe. I mean, I understand the house needs work, the house is a high-sore. I think I would vote in favor of that and certainly not spook the neighbors as much as it is of bringing this thing down. I don't know if that's possible, uh, Larry, what else you have, thanks?
To be perfectly honest with you, I, I, I'm having a hard time understanding why there's been no communication directly with the neighbors and with the council. And, and they, it, to me, it's like an end around is the way that I'm looking at it. Because the, the floor plans seem to be the same, basically the same room count. I know that we can put a restriction on it so it can never be used as a two-family. But they, all of a sudden, the landscaping disappeared that we had asked for. The parking disappeared that we had asked for. And all the issues that we, when we were looking at it as a two-family, came off the board. That, that's my opinion, that's, that's the way that I feel about it.
Okay. I don't think it's too large. I think you've said it all, Kelly, I think it's, uh, it's too much, too small a lot. If you've got a two-foot variance between, built right away and where this house is, I don't even know how they're gonna construct it to go up. So, I just think it's too large, I would vote negative.
Are you going off the back, how much are you going off the back from the proposed? None. So, and you're not expanding the width of it at all?
No.
So, my issue is, is, and, and this is, I'm not, I, I understand you guys' concerns, I think it's a very big house for a very small lot, but we sat up here as a board and we said, "We will not approve a two-family house." They come back with a single-family, and now we say, "We will not approve your single-family house." On the same side, on the same setback, it's a thirty-foot, it's a thirty-foot height. It's not, it is big. I mean, how do you build a second floor? How much lower can you get, twenty-eight? You know? I mean, like, what are we, what are we, and, and what does that do to your pitch? I, I'm just saying, you know, at some point, they're gonna keep, this, this is gonna continue on. They, they, they want to improve the house, that's my feeling. So, I'm in favor of this position of their, their house as, we asked for a single-family, they came back with a single-family. That's where I stand.
I hear both sides, obviously. I, I think the house is, as drawn, is a little bit big for this lot, and the setbacks are very tiny here. At the same time, it's not a two-family, it's not drawn as a two-family. Theoretically, it could be changed to one relatively simply.
But anyhow, sir.
But anyhow. We asked them, we asked them to modify from a two to a one. They did. So, uh, while I'm not happy with the size of it, uh, in relation to the lot, uh, in terms of between, I don't know, but which way to go with this.
I, I, we, I don't think that we asked for this, right?
We didn't ask for it, we just said, we just said...
We just denied the two-family.
Yeah, we said we wouldn't approve a two-family. No, we didn't say, we didn't say, we, we, we said we, I think we did say we will only approve a single-family house on this lot. I think, I'm pretty sure that somebody said that in this meeting.
I don't remember that, but I just remember getting voted down. And then surprised that it was back there again talking and voting.
But it's a different application, they couldn't send in the same application, it's a different application.
All right, so, um, so if we take a little vote here, it seems like we have...
As a councilor, I have some percent.
Can I have a question? Do you want? Could you close the end, right? So, could you, I just have a couple of questions in, in watching this and your deliberations. A lot of you mentioned the two doors. Mr. Dukin, I heard, and, I'm sorry if it's distracted when you spoke, but you're confident that there is not an independent dwelling unit in this building as designed? Because you and I often walk through, and here comes the plans presented, and after the end of the day, then they go and block it in. And you and I worked through plans on this a lot of times with these concerns. And are you confident that that is not the case with these seven plans?
I'm very confident there's no secret agent doors and that this can only be used as a one.
Okay. And then, what, so the point about the parking was, my other question is, how many, so it's a four-bedroom home, what is the parking requirement? And what is being submitted for parking for this plan? So... Because I, I couldn't find that information.
Yeah, um...
It's a single, right?
It's a single-family home.
Four bedrooms, right? So, the parking...
It's not off bedrooms, is it? It's stuff, no.
So it's four bedrooms?
I don't think it's off bedrooms, though, I don't think, we don't...
I believe we did, well, we re-qualified.
So it's residence B and it's only, it only requires two per door?
Two per door.
Residence A is classified.
Tough, but that was a single-family, a single-family house. How is the parking, is it stacked parking or is it set aside parking? So you're telling me you're gonna put a four-bedroom home with stacked two spots? So the reality is, you're staying on an overcrowded street, you're letting this happen by design, under, being underparked. I just, I just wanted to be clear for the record.
And there's a hydrant in front of the house.
Well, there was a parking plan, one of those, a two-family.
And what was that?
It's a behind-the-house.
Right, so why can't they, at minimum, submit parking, you know, why can't we condition it that they provided additional parking spots? I think that's a very fair condition, if you're only concerned.
Because, but, um, I still think it's too high, so I'm not sure that would be enough.
Well, I mean, I'm just trying to see, what can, what can you get for the neighborhood? That, you know, if this is coming in, it's taking up all of the footprint. If you're saying it's gonna be a four-bedroom with empty and family rooms in a plan that's concerning to this board, you know, what conditions? That's my concern.
I mean, I, I would even say, come back with three bedrooms.
Yeah, but, I mean, they, so you're building above the house, right? They're not gonna come back with a smaller footprint on the second floor.
No, I understand, I understand.
So what are they gonna do, just make it a family room?
Well, I mean...
I'm just, I'm just hypothetically saying, you, you, you're gonna put up something that somebody's gonna come and apply for a variance down the road for, I'm not a variance, they're gonna come, apply for a building permit and put up another wall.
We can, we can, as of the condition, and it's not real, we can run to a two. Right?
That's correct.
At some point, I, I mean, what are you gonna build, a half a house off the second floor? I mean, I'm just, I, I get it, there's, there's, there's an issue, it's a small lot, they, they don't wanna say go up the floor on the house, they don't block your view, I, I get it, it's personal. I believe me, I understand it, it's happened next door to me, two houses down, you know? All right, let's, uh, let's have a roll call here.
Grant the relief, so it...
Right now, you're...
In favor.
You're in favor.
Negative.
Negative. Falling in favor that if we restrict it to a single-family in future. Still, Brian.
I, I, if we leave it as it is with the three bedrooms or four bedrooms, I want, I'll pack it. And even at that, I have a hard time with it. I'd like some, some conversations with the neighbors. So, see, yeah, go ahead, please.
We met with the neighbors on the prior application, and, um, if I may, we met with the neighbors in, in prior application, and responded to every opposition that was brought up here from the board and from the neighbors throughout the, the three applications we, we went through on that second, um, that two-story, I'm sorry, the two-family. Um, I've tried to contact Councilor Hughes many, many times. Um, I've had maybe one or two emails back from her, I've sent her copies of the plans, I've asked her for community meetings. I can't get in touch with her, I'm not getting responses from her, I've tried. I'm not sure that we're willing to meet with the neighbors again, you know, only because it seems like the post keeps get, the post keep getting moved on us. We've tried to comply. We've tried, we've tried to respond to everything that's been requested of us. One of the neighbors that is writing the letter...
One of the neighbors that is writing the letters called me at my office and asked if my client would be interested in purchasing her property. So I'm not sure, so this has been a very contentious and not very pleasant experience for any of us, but I, my client believes that she has the right to improve her property, and I, and I think that we're doing everything that we're asked. And I asked you to, I asked you...
Well, can I ask you why you pulled the landscaping plan?
We would have included the landscaping had it been required. This is a second, a different application, we would have absolutely included it. We're intending to improve the property, we're not intending to turn that into some, some sort of, I don't even know what the speculations are based on. The allegations, we can't support because there's some time in the future of things that could or might happen. We, we feel like we've been acting out of faith on this and responding. We're certainly intending to put landscaping there, as discussed with the neighbors, and as far as the parking goes, there's a standing garage there that allows for, not the, the four stacks, it allows you to move sort of in and around, and in a one-family scenario, you imagine that people know each other, and if cars need to be moved, they can be moved. I mean, we need two spaces there, and we have room for four.
Thank you.
We're doing our best.
Isn't this fun? It's better to be like...
We gotta go one more time over the report.
You're still a saver? Still on San Fair.
You are?
Negative.
Negative?
Favor with restrictions. I mean, I gotta say, I'm, I'm opposed.
I think I'm gonna be opposed to, unless, unless you think you took, I don't know what. I mean, you know, I, I kinda think that bringing the house down a little bit would just be something against neighbors. It's the height itself, limited to 35 feet, way below that, by the officer.
And, and that one, that one and a half story was actually something more that I discussed with the building inspector, and I think our understanding of the drawing may be different than what Jim thought or intended. It's a, how many feet is it? It's not a living space, it's not a...
From the floor to the peak, it's eight and six, eight feet and six inches. So if you were to put it back to the ceiling line, it's not even capable. It's basically standard. Yeah, okay, all right, that's not a bad idea. Let's make, make a motion, and we'll vote. So make a motion to, if you want to, and make a motion to deny, and we'll see if we're favor or not.
Mr. Chairman, regarding case number Z-17-64, when and when, one, for variance to construct a 1 and 1/2 story addition to the existing single-family home on the premises number 48 Newton Avenue, Quincy, I'd like to make a motion to deny the request.
All those in favor of denying the request? Aye.
Aye.
All those, all those opposed to the dying request? Aye, I think I'm gonna lie to, I'm sorry. Three, two. Three, two. Deny? Yeah.
Not tonight?
No.
It's still my deal.
In favor?
In favor.
Of the variance? Branding the variance?
Fine. So that passes? Say with?
Why?
Because we just...
With no restrictions?
Yeah, we'll put those in.
Okay. Here, it's out there. What restriction are we gonna put in?
We're gonna put in that it can't be converted to a two-family.
No conversion, a landscaping plan. At least four spaces.
And four parking spaces.
Four parking.
Yeah.
Can I have a question that was never addressed in the conversation with the meetings of the neighbors? We have no idea what they're gonna do, or how they're gonna address construction when there's only two feet of property on the other side.
They're gonna have to deal with the building inspector to do that, so.
That's what you need. That's what you do, this is what I do.
Can we give the conditions for me?
Okay, the conditions are that the property will not ever be allowed to be turned, converted to a two-family home. That there be landscaping for the plan provided to the filling inspector.
Per approval.
For approval, and that, at some point, they'll see if they can get four parking places.
Yep, I got all those.
So moved? Thank you.